Two tribes, basic flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite and everlasting. Everybody please bow their head for your prayer. Your Lord, thank you for the weather we've been having. Thank you for the people in this room. Please watch all the actions of this board as we work for this community to try to make it a better place. In your name we pray. Alright, reading and approval of minutes from the October 18th meeting.
Motion to approve and suspend.
And motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor of these minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. What's that? I hope not. Approval of the agenda, any changes, additions, corrections?
Motion to approve.
And motion by Hack to approve the agenda. Second. Second by Stern. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Alright, agenda is set. Five A, engineers' report. Jared's not with us. He did send a report that I wish you had received. There's nothing really on here, Monty, that we need to take action on.
No, like he noted in there, they're not asking for any approvals at this meeting. They'll have a few things at the mid-month meeting on the 15th. And they have suspended the construction meetings.
The Tuesday morning meetings.
The Tuesday morning meetings because of the lack of work.
And our roadhead has cut in up there, the service roadhead, and the gates are installed. Alright, let's move on into five B, expedition estates, special assessments. Dan, can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Yeah, great.
Okay. As presented by, or as requested by Williams builders, the repairs on expedition estates for those streets are being assessed to the vacant properties. They're not assessing them to the properties that they've sold. So the special assessment commission did meet yesterday and go through and approved the certification for the special assessment list. As discussed earlier, and in the draft that I sent out, I am proposing that we assess a quarter percent interest, and I made these payable over five years. They didn't really make any statements as to the timeframe they were requesting to have to pay these. Obviously, they can pay them off immediately without any interest, or after January 1, they'll start accruing the interest at that .25% as indicated in the notes. Had this funds been in our account, we'd have been earning .10% over the last year.
Alright, any questions for Monty?
Nope.
Alright, then if we want to move forward with this, then we need a motion.
So who?
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you.
This will be certified then for collection after January 1.
Six A, free deuce hall renter, Lions Club.
Benefit for November 14th for Rainy Hard, Sunny Brennan for Rainy Hard, through the Hayes and Lions Club. Again.
Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Hack, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Alright, moving now to eight. Eight A. We have two condemnation items on the agenda, and first one is for 310 Fourth Avenue Northwest. And I believe you were here for that. So the last time we met, we kind of left it up to the homeowner to come back to us with a suggestion what the plan is. And so let's go ahead and hear from you.
I wouldn't be able to do nothing through the winter on it, we're busy on our other house. But this spring, I would be planning on starting to do more on it, if that's alright with you guys. The timeframe when it starts, I guess, maybe four months, and get it up to where we need to sell. So if that's okay with you guys, but I would not be able to start on it this winter. We have our other house, we're trying to do that all through February, and we've got two problems. Try to get this one situated first, and then after this winter, I'd be able to do it. So I'll say April, I guess April is when I do, April, May, the latest, and we start on it.
Dan, can you hear this report?
A little bit.
Okay.
I'm looking at Mr. Wees' report here.
Okay. The homeowner just said that he would not be able to work on it for about four months. And then he would be able to try to get to it, and wants to get it up for, fix it up, and we'll have to sell it.
What kind of timeframe are we looking at, once he's able to get to it?
About four months, I guess.
You think you'll get to it within four months? And how long will it take him to do the work?
Yeah, four months.
What is your, can you, what's your plan on, is that the, is that the service, electrical service right there?
Yes.
Our inspector still recommends condemnation to the home, because it's in pretty bad shape.
If that's, if that's what's been happening, then I mean, it's up to you guys, but we'll have to do that too. But I will be able to do that immediately.
Have you got a copy of all the problems that he saw?
No.
I mean, like, the basement walls are bulging. He says you have to lift the house and repair them. Is the house... Then I can't say if it's worth it or not, because it's your house, but there's a lot of time and money that will be spent.
Yeah.
On trying to get it up to code where somebody could live in it.
Yes.
I don't know if you can.
We couldn't be off and spending...
Yeah.
And which is fine, too, we're prepared either way, but in the case, if it does have to be demoed, I would ask if we do that this spring also. We're so busy right now.
Dan, I'm not sure if you heard.
I think if we move forward here, we're going to be establishing some timeframe targets. And frankly, because of, I would consider the generosity of the Lord here, if we were to move forward with this here. If targets and stuff are not met, there may be money spent, and we're still looking at a condemnation.
The homeowner did, Dan, I'm not sure if you heard, the homeowner, and if I'm wrong, I'm going to relay this to Dan. Dan, the homeowner did say that, you know, if we do recommend condemnation and it has to be torn down, he would not be able to do it until this spring, just due to his own personal timelines right now.
The teardown?
Correct, yeah. But I agree with what you said prior to that.
Maybe, maybe it would be worthwhile, Monty, if you want to share what the cost was for demolition on another home in the community. You know, to do that on your own is, I think, a huge undertaking, probably as much of an undertaking as the trying to renovate the place.
Yeah, he does, he does have the equipment, he's got the machinery.
Okay.
To do it. Does anybody want the Mr. Wees' report read? And you did get a copy?
I did not.
You got it. Well, I have to look. Yes, sir.
I've been just, the house is north of this place, and what I would ask, as living in a neighborhood, is if he does, if you guys decide to let him do whatever and hold it over till spring, secure the house, I mean, there's a board across the screen door on the west side, and I don't know, I've never been in the lot, but, you know, we got a lot of kids, little kids that run around and whatnot. Even if he, even if he just kind of trimmed out the grass in the front or something there. I mean, it looks like it belongs in the Halloween zone, but...
Okay, thank you. That was from, Dan, that was given by a neighbor in this area, that last little comment, ever. Okay, so we've seen, we've seen the report, we've seen the photos, we've heard from the landlord, I guess. Which direction are we leaning as a board?
I would like to see a condemnation, but giving him time till like June to get it torn down.
June, June 1?
Yeah, to get it torn down, because it's, it needs to be, and I mean, it's a very hard June 1. Some of them, we've been letting them run for a while, and I'd like to see them go as quickly as the last one went.
Is that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Motion by Wolf.
I will back them up.
Second by Pillar. Discussion.
I guess I'd just like to say that, I mean, I'd like to see it gone sooner than that, I mean. It seems like every time that we move this stuff out, you know, for, for, I guess, a lot of time, it just keeps on, you know, getting, getting, I guess, moved down, moved down all the time, but...
And I'm only saying June, so I give him time from like April to get it torn down. But I mean, like a really firm June, if it's not done, we do it, no questions asked.
And we go.
And we go.
Once I get in there, in a week, I'll be done, it'll be done.
Yeah. I mean, if we can get it before, to, to, before June, it would be great, because a lot of them...
Yeah, and I'll try, I mean, there, it is times I give it some time that we get it, open this box, but even if it's where, if I have some time, we'll figure it slow, I can get in there just right now. We're so, scheduled so busy and stuff, so...
Monty?
Do we need, do we need to add anything to this motion that, that includes your follow-up comments, Nancy?
Which follow-up?
Us tearing it down, probably.
That it's not done by the hard date that the...
Oh, that was included in the motion. The hard date of June 1st.
She is including that, Dan.
Okay, very good.
You want to include security on that, or...
What's, what's unsecured right now, do we?
No, makes it complicated.
I know you said, I mean, there's a board over the door now.
The board is, the board is there, I have the board there, so I can drive by and see if anybody's been in there. The back's all secured and locked, the board is there, so I, then I'll know if somebody's been in or not. Say, anybody can tear it off with the hands, but if somebody tears it off with the hands, then I know if somebody's been in there.
Yeah.
That's what the board's across for. But the back's all secured, everything's locked.
So the kids can't get in the building?
No.
Is that the garage as well, or?
The garage, no, the garage is okay, but the, yeah, I will be, I believe that's...
Okay, alright, thank you. We have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Monty, you got the second, read the motion? Alright, roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried. Wolf, we appreciate you being here, and thank you for getting to it as soon as you can. And you heard, we do have a hard date of June 1, and it's not met by then. We'll do it, we'll have it torn down, we'll build it, so probably cheaper to do it yourself.
Yeah.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight B, 104 Fourth Street Northeast condemnation. That's the duplex across the street from the high school, well, right beside the, one, the house that was just torn down recently.
The Asian house.
The Asian house, yes.
Just looking in, Lauren was unable to get into the building, but you can see some of the issues, just looking in, as far as mold issues. The floor paint is peeling off and that, there was this one, you can see the floor is actually bulged because of the moisture and everything. Lauren, in his report, basically said, the furnace is well beyond design life and needs replacement. The electrical is more than likely original, so he is recommending condemnation. If approved, I would set up, create the notice, notify the property owner, and then set a hearing for them to appear.
Okay.
Motion to approve the, sort of the condemnation process.
Second.
Motion by Hack, second by Wolf, discussion. So we'll give this property owner the same opportunity we just gave this gentleman here.
Yeah. He'll be notified of the report and supplied the pictures that we have, and asked to appear and explain why it shouldn't be condemned.
Do we want to ask her to let Lauren in?
I can put that in the notice, you know, that if possible, we'd like the inspector to get inside and take a look at it. That way, they'll be aware of what's going on.
Okay. Hurry, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? Roll call.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hold an hour.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Alright, reports, water sewer.
Nothing to report at this time.
Streets Cemetery.
The only thing I got to report is, we had a very cheap fix on our case loader, a couple bucks for a electrical fitting. I was going to play it out, but I figured, no, I'd better not. It's up and running.
It can, a little bit, because of mobilization.
Well, yeah, we're going to get hit with mobilization on a $2 or $3 per. But other than that, it's up and running again.
Good. Still sweeping leaves and...
Yep. Grabbing a few trees, some of the nuisance on that are hanging over, we'll get hit with the loader, a little blade in this one, if we get stalled, so, yeah, we're pretty well ready.
Oh, my Ken reported, I had a resident comment on her, they were happy to see the purchase, and that's working good. The blade on the back of the tractor doing well on one of our gravel road streets up north. So he caught me at an event the other night, so...
Sounds nice to hear.
Yes, that's all I have.
Okay. Finance, busting, library. Nancy, police, fire.
Nothing at this time.
Okay, bust your HCD.
Right, well, um...
Been busy.
We have, it's been busy, yeah, we were still, a lot of the way on the coal, so we haven't submitted, we haven't submitted the infrastructure, one yet for the pipeline gaps, because that's on a rolling deadline date. But that'll be going in, I think, reasonably soon now, the people that are working on that are, are, they'll probably get that squared away fairly soon. We had a interesting and good conversation, I think, with the head of the Department of Commerce, James Lehman, and one of the other gentlemen, I don't know if the financial picture dropped out the other day, and talked about, you know, what can we do, what can we do for Coal Country in terms of some of the stuff that we're looking at in the future. So one of the things, there's a, there are a number of things that we discussed, potential projects, you know, but one of the things that we talked about is the fact that he felt that what we need to be doing is probably meeting monthly, so that everybody is kind of more up to speed in terms of what's happening here around our area in Coal Country, because, you know, we do have a big energy sector here. You probably saw or heard, we were hoping that the proposal for upper money in the gas line was going to come down 200. You probably saw that that's not the case, at least as of yet, that's not the case. The governor's proposal was to run that down Highway 200, all the way from the Bakken to Grand Forks, and then south to... A couple.
No, down Highway 2.
Highway 2, excuse me, I said 200, Highway 2. We're still, we did emphasize how important we felt it would be if we could get gas coming down 200. One of the things that we did find out is this, we thought that there would be an opportunity to tap into the line at DGC, where in the past, you know, they talked about the fact that we can't do that because of some regulations. Well, that isn't going to happen in the near future, at least until if and when, if that plan changes hands, because they, there's no way that they would allow some of that to happen now in the interim without... And of course, if that was the case, we would have looked at tapping in at Zap, which would have really reduced some of those costs. So we're just going to keep plugging away. There also is, we still have some of the conversation about trying to maybe work with Marathon and get some of that flaring, capture some of that flaring up in the Twin Cities area, and the possibility of maybe the transportation getting sold, and then turning it into a mini gas plant, electric gas plant, and then providing gas our way after that, but that's, of course, would be a long ass, I don't wishful thinking, but possibility, because it doesn't look like, you know, Marathon or whomever is, they want to put a processing plant over in this section of Mercer County, so... And someone told me the other day that they actually drilled the wall, a well, in Western Mercer, but, you know, I didn't dig deep enough, I don't know if it was for oil, looking for oil, or if it was CO2, you know? So, and then of course, you know, the carbon capture thing is, is big, you know? And Jerry and I, we were at a Coal County merger meeting the other night, lots of good presenters, listened to about five or six different folks, Lieutenant Governor Randy Christman, and then our legislative group that was there, so we got to keep kind of the pedal to the metal, hopefully. Hopefully, we can get some things still rolling in our area here. You know, that tourism grant hasn't been submitted as of yet, and then that infrastructure grant, and I think I might have reported previously that the tourism grant, even though that was $100 million, our share is going to be two, and then I did, I know I did mention the coal, coal communities, that was a $200 million grant, and our share up in this area was five, so... So those numbers, you wouldn't know quite a bit where those things are at, so, but yeah, it's been busy, so, questions?
Thanks, Buster.
Yeah.
So I did send out that, you guys did see the email I sent with two of the speakers, and I just got minutes today from Pete Probar, I should have sent those, you guys, did you get all those, did you send those to everybody, Monty? Okay, you should read through that, it's, you know, the meeting was three and a half hours long that night, but in a five-minute read, you can kind of get a condensed version of what happened. And if you didn't read it, you know, one of the biggest takeaways, when Honor Tell Power was there speaking about the Kyle Power Plant, you know, they're one of four owners in that facility, and they own 35%. And, you know, they're looking at getting out by 2028, which is also coincides with the regional haze date going into effect. They are looking for a buyer for their 35%, they don't want to see the plant close, but it's going to be hard to find a buyer for that 35% for that, those megawatts to be, continue to be generated at that facility, so... And it does not, it does not qualify for becoming a CO2 sequestration facility, is that right, Buster?
Yeah.
That, and then when the lady from Base Electric spoke, that was kind of a little bit more, it kind of felt like it hit hard as well to our community, that, you know, Leland Olds Station, that's a 65-year-old location, and that, you know, they're going to make some hard decisions on Lee Olds soon, she said. But just by her emphasizing the age of that facility, it makes you think that, that may be one of their portfolio assets that's may not be continued, as we all know anyhow, so... Anyhow, it was quite a meeting, a lot of great discussion, the guy from EERC, from Grand Forks, UND, probably the smartest guy I've heard talking about a long time, but there is a lot of interesting information that, and research that's happening at UND on how to use, still use coal in other aspects.
One of the things that we talked about with the, with the commerce folks is the carbon, you know, the military, that could be a potential evidence for, the carbon is the, is the, on the military side of things, you know, Department of Defense, possibly, so, I mean, yeah, Grand Forks has, they've identified all of those trace minerals that we could get out of there, and there's a number of them that, but it's a matter of, again, you know, trying to get the right, the right mix of folks coming out this direction.
Okay, let's move down to 10. 10A, hometown salute of volunteers section, Hayes and Stars recognizing local volunteers in the paper, wants to know if we want to partake in a ad. Monty, what have we done in the past for this?
I didn't find any record of this.
We've done tabs like this before, I know, I don't know what, but, uh, this is, this itself is, is new.
Generally, we would do the quarter page or less.
Yeah, what would the board like to do with anything? Both to do a quarter page. On full color. Okay, motion by Stern, and that's the, uh, 225. Second by Pillar, discussion. Roll call.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. Okay, 11 A, temporary COVID personnel policy.
This was presented a couple meetings ago, actually. Uh, I had no comments from the staff, or recommendations from the staff, the great Pat was, he thought it was okay.
Show me a great one, I guess, I don't know.
I don't think there is one.
No, I don't think there is one either. Okay, so we want to put this into action, then we need motion to, I was hoping to get some feedback from our staff. I heard from what, the office ladies, and they, they liked what we're doing, that's all I heard.
So move.
Motion by Wolf to institute the temporary COVID-19 personnel policy.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion.
So I guess, I guess what's the timeline on this, if it's just, I guess, temporary?
Timeline, basically, I'll tell you.
Until we left it or?
Four. Okay, we left it, okay, okay.
Any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye, motion carried, thank you. All right. Moving down to, uh, 11 B, the water service insulation project invoicing.
I have prepared the invoices for all of those whose water services were insulated on Bluegrass Lane, following along with the costs as submitted by Bowers Excavating. Uh, as indicated in my notes, my only question was, are you putting a timeframe on these? If it's not paid by next October, does it go on the specials? Again, these were funds that we were holding in our, in our regular budget, so. Do you want to wait to send these to see what the weather does, if it actually is working, not that it matters, because we did it anyway?
I think, I think we had set the expectation when we had the discussion that there would be billing on that, we, we couldn't give a 100% guarantee, that we were going to move forward, because this was the meeting, all of the best engineering practices. And I guess, I, I was always under the impression that we were going to do it just like any other assessment in that they would have opportunities to have that put onto their taxes or pay it up for us, huh?
I think there was also discussion that they could make payments, and that's why you're saying till October of next year?
That was my thought, yeah.
Yeah, is, uh, that was my understanding of the discussion, was that they could pay it from now to October of next year, and if not, then it goes on their, um, specials, yeah.
I'm comfortable with that.
That's what I was, I could, I could, I'd be, I guess, so.
Yeah. And this is the full, this is everything you said, Bowers, that was 20,000, 20,300?
Yes.
And what was quoted to the residents is correct on the invoice?
Correct in here, they included the additional stuff for Mr. Smith doing the extra service line.
Yep.
And then the correction was made on the Oaklands, as initially it was done from the west side when it was actually on the north side. Theirs was higher than most of the other ones because of the concrete driveway removal.
On Smith's, which one was the additional, the garage, that was?
Theirs would have been, uh, they're both the same, basically.
I'm sorry, I was looking at Oaklands, there's two of them on the Oaklands.
Yeah, see, the one at Oaklands, the higher one is because of the removals of the driveway, when they had to cut out the driveway and do all of that. And that's why theirs was higher for those, basically 20,000 feet.
Okay. And all the concrete works, everything is done there as well?
Everything is done there, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any more discussion?
No.
No? We don't have a motion, I'm sorry. Okay, we're still discussing.
So we're just making a motion to send these bills out?
Yes, and then I will draft the letter informing them that they'll have until October 1st of 2022, and the payment order will be assessed in their specials.
So move.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. And I remember our discussion of paying part of this, we, we chose not to help pay, the city wasn't paying part of this.
The city did the concrete repairs of the curves and the driveway.
Any more discussion?
That's what we did, we, we paid the asphalt repairs, correct?
Correct.
Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye, motion carried. Approve the bills.
Those are to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern.
On the bills, I am including these transfers and westerns objection. Uh, transferring from the police vehicle special fund for the purchase of the vehicle plus a bunch of the equipment, then from the general equipment reserve for the graphics and the new in-car camera system, and then the other ones will be annual for, from the sales tax fund to reduce the specials on those two projects. Which we approved previously, because when we set those projects up, we were paying down 10%
Yeah.
From the sales tax fund, and that represents the 10% for this year on those bonds.
I can't see the totals on those, can you read those to me?
Um, from the police vehicle fund, we'll be transferring $43,200. From the equip, general equipment fund, we'll be transferring $10,651, and we'll be transferring $38,526 from the sales tax fund into those special assessment funds.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Okay, motion by Hack.
Good morning.
Yeah, we have a motion.
Oh, sorry, you need to check those out, that's in, in addition, right?
No, it was included on the agenda after transfers and transfers.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
O'Conner.
Aye, motion carried, adjourned.